Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 20th, 2017 meeting of Canyon City's Planning Commission. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Certainly, good evening. Chairman Bellantoni.
Present.
Commissioner Bates is excused absence. Commissioner Maloney.
Here.
Commissioner Hammack.
Here.
Commissioner Frida is an excused absence. And Commissioner Ladue.
Here.
And Councilmember Gill.
Here.
Thank you. We will now turn to the approval of the minutes of March 21st, 2017. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of regular meeting of Canyon City Planning Commission held on March 21st, 2017.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammack.
Commissioner Maloney.
Aye.
Commissioner Hammack.
Aye.
Chairman Bellantoni.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Minutes are approved as presented. We will now move forward with the third item on the agenda. All right, we will consider the year two review of reduced parking arrangement for boarding house, for the boarding house located at 431 Harrison Avenue in the R2 Zone District. The provisions of the Canyon City Municipal Code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision and development regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record for this hearing as if set forth by verbatim. Okay. Madam Planner.
Yes, Madam Chair. Let me give you the staff report. This is the year two review for the Villa Carina boarding house, reduced parking arrangement. You will perhaps remember that a couple of years ago when this conditional use permit was applied for, Villa Carina asked for a reduced parking arrangement. They did not, because this is an infill site, they're reusing an old church property, they were not able to accommodate all of the parking that they needed. Therefore, they asked the Planning Commission as part of our parking regulations, and they could do that for a reduced parking. So they provided three onsite, seven on the street. And as part of that review, they would go through a three-year review. They are in year two, and we are going to do the same thing, or we did the same thing for this review that we did at year one, excuse me. And that was to review their parking needs and their uses. We took, did a random site visit on a couple of different occasions and took pictures of their parking on the street. We asked them also to provide a review of their last year and how it's working out. We had, and arrived at the same conclusion that we did last year was, and that is that it, their parking is just fine. They are not affecting their neighbors in any way, they're not, they haven't outgrown any of their parking. The last thing that I would say about that is that during this last review, as we had gone through a couple of issues with Villa Carina, we amended their permit, and that is in here, and I wanted to let you know that, that there was a discrepancy between what we allowed and what we understood and what the fire district ultimately allowed as their maximum number of people to be onsite for overnight. And that was our, we approved 13, the fire district approved 16. We ended up changing the permit so that those two agreed, gave them the higher number at 16. That has not also affected their parking or anything else, and we feel really comfortable about the fact that we got that all together. Jason Messer, who is the manager, owner of the property, is here if you have any questions of him. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Do you have questions for staff? Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and address the commission? Please. Hi, Jason. We don't bite. Come on down.
Do I need to?
Introduce yourself and state your address, please.
My name's Jason Messer, 2860 Melvina, Canyon City.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't, I mean, I can just thank you guys for this consideration. I don't think that we are by any means exceeding the parking limitations. I think that we consistently come in under what our max number is, and I don't see any reason why we would ever exceed those. Just the demographic that we serve tend to be more of a, transport themselves by legs, whether that's on bike or foot or whatever that may be. There's not a lot of cars needed there, so. Other than that, though, we continue to serve our demographic well, and I think that we fulfill a niche in our community that is, is kind of overlooked. So I think that we do some good things for Canyon City.
Have questions for the applicant? Oh, I do, I do. So you have 16 residents? That's what your goal is?
Yeah, oh yeah, I mean, that's pretty easy.
And you currently have?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it, there's obviously fluctuation. I mean, they are residents there, and so, you know, they're in and out, and it's not meant to be kind of a long-term forever home, and we really want to guide these guys into transitioning into a more detached living facility, if you will. And so, the number fluctuates.
But average, averages?
Yeah, I think average, we're probably 14 to 16. We stay pretty full, especially right now. There's, there's just such a lack of housing that, yeah.
Are you familiar with Ms. Bernath's review, her staff report?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, so there's a chart on the bottom of page two of her report that says percent of residents without vehicles. What percent of your residents are without vehicles?
Well, I would say 70%, 60, 70%. And I guess I do not, I would probably have to look at that again.
That goes back, that goes back to the original.
Permit.
Review.
Okay.
Permit. So there was a, there was a, an analysis of that, so.
I have no further questions, but then nobody did before, right? Okay, thank you, Mr. Messer.
Okay, thank you.
All right, does anybody have any other questions of staff? Do we have to, need to discuss anything? Ms. Bernath, oh, go.
Well, I was, I was, since you raised the point about this analysis, at 70%, let me, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but it's in your staff report, and it's page two of the April 21st, 2015 staff report where this was originally approved. At, if, if 70% of the residents are without vehicles, then in reality, the total number of spaces that actually would be needed would be five, and, but what was required was 13. So just to let you know that they, because a lot of their residents don't have cars, that's why they're not meeting those needs.
And remind me how many they had, so what I'm hearing is maximum of maybe five, if it's.
Yeah, something like that.
And he, he has that.
He has three onsite and seven on the street, so.
Okay, at this time, we don't have any more questions. Do we have a motion? Please note how Terry out, excuse me, Ms. Bernath outlined this, what?
That's true. We, because this is not a standard hearing, there isn't a, there aren't findings of fact. So my suggestion is that perhaps you just do a straw poll and that you wish to approve the year two and then move on and suggest that you go to year three and that will be the final one.
But.
That will be the final parking review next year.
Next year, so which is what the conditional use originally said.
That's correct.
So what did you mean by straw poll?
Well, I would just ask the.
We just, why don't we just?
Ask the members. Or you can make a motion if you wish.
Can we just follow this and be done?
Madam Chairman, I think the record's complete and adequate to support the continued moving this on to the year three review. I'm satisfied that conditions are met and that there's no further action required by us at this time.
Does anybody else agree with Commissioner Hammack?
I agree.
I'm not allowed to shake my head.
Okay, and that's what we mean by a straw poll. And that's the first time I've ever had that here. Okay. Are we good?
It may not be quite kosher, but it works for this. So, as long as you're all in agreement.
I think we are. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Messer, for what you do for our community. Okay, moving on to the next item. We will open the public hearing for a special review use for an accessory dwelling unit located at 230 Yale Place in an R1 Zone District. And the provisions of the City of Canyon City Municipal Code and particularly Title 17 thereof and the subdivision and development regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of this hearing as if set forth by verbatim. Ms. Bernath, would you please start us off with your report?
I'd be happy to. This is a request for special review use for an accessory dwelling unit at 230 Yale Place in the R1 Low Density Residential District. Written notice was mailed to all of the property owners within 300 feet at least 15 days prior to this meeting as is required by Title 17. An accessory dwelling unit in the R1 District can be approved through the special review use. They can be approved as a new unit, not having been existed legally after 2011, or they can be approved as something that was existing prior to 2011, and they would be approved in a different way. Mr. Canny had, was not able to prove to us that he had a legal unit prior to 2011. Therefore, he has to come in and get a special review use for his ADU. It is existing in a separate garage in a loft, and it is rented out. He has been, as you know from reading the staff report, he has been in, under violation a couple of different times, but having indicated to us that he never really meant to have this, that that didn't happen, it, the renters went away, and then the renters came back, and then the renters went away, and the renters came back. We were finally contacted by the post office because a renter wanted to get an address. That address was erroneous, doesn't even make any sense. And because we knew that they were asking for another address, we realized that he was, he was renting this property again. We contacted his representative because he does not live in the state, and Ms. Arona is here today, and she can also fill in some information for you. So he, Ms. Arona, for Mr. Canny, submitted an application, and we reviewed it, and your staff report indicates all of the background information about when the garage was built, when the house was built, what the vehicular access is, there's adequate off-street parking, there's water and sewer, and this application meets all of the requirements except for I was not here when the ADU process went through Planning Commission and council, but there is a specific provision in here that says in the R1 Low Density Residential District, an owner has to live onsite six months out of the year. And Mr. Canny does not live here. So this is the only thing that he does not, or this application does not meet. I just wanted to let you know that. All of the other issues, there aren't any environmental issues, it meets the minimum lot size. If this is approved, he will go through and get what we call a certificate of compliance because we can't find any evidence that this was built with a building permit or was finaled in any way. We don't know that, so what would happen is they would have a home inspection, he would have plumbing and electrical finals, our building inspector or our building, acting building official would go and inspect the property. And once all of those things are signed off on, in terms of also being up to date on water and on sewer, he would get a certificate of compliance, and then he can rent it out legally. And we would also get a proper address for the, for the structure. So with that, I have, if you are inclined to go ahead and approve this, we have some recommended conditions of approval on page three of the staff report towards the bottom. So the condition number one would require Mr. Canny to get a certificate of compliance that I just described to you. He would also have to get any building, electrical, or plumbing permits if they may be necessary. We don't know that at this time. He would have to get a proper assignment of address. He would also have to comply with requirements, if there are any, from the Fremont Sanitation District and the Canyon City Area Fire District. And five, number five, which is on page four, this is in all of our staff reports, it's a general condition that says that all material representations the applicant will be held to. And number six gives him a certain amount of time to get this all done, which is 60 We did mail notice to 21 area property owners. I had two inquiries from neighbors. None of them were protesting the request at all. You'll have packet materials and background. If there's anything I can help you with, I'd be happy to answer questions. Also, in Appendix A, we have pulled out all of the requirements for ADUs, and you can see the highlighted portion in the middle of page five is the only thing that, we can see that this particular application does not meet.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilmember Gill, you have a question?
It took too long, I forgot.
Okay, moving right along.
Question. Is this something you think, as far as the owner residing, is it something you think we need to maybe look at and modify at a larger level? I mean, when we're going over the codes and stuff?
That's entirely possible. In my experience, since I've been here, we haven't had an issue where the owner was not residing on the property that we were aware of. They always, or they have, in all of those circumstances, they were, they were residing on the property. This is the first one I've run into where that is not the case. And it, it only is in R1. It's not, so for instance, if his property was in R2, that wouldn't be a requirement. And I can't tell you why that is. I, well, I, I mean, we can all surmise that.
I was there.
Okay, then Ms. Bellantoni will be able to enlighten us.
Yeah, I was there when we wrote this one. This was, this was rough. And the distinction between one and two is density and one being single-family residence. We didn't want residential R1 to become.
R2.
R2, yeah. However, and it, there was quite a bit of discussion on how do you do that? And if I recall, we had an ADU before us before that was pretty plain going to be rented, but the owner resided in the primary structure, and they were renting the ADU. In this case, we don't have the owner on the property, they're both rented, right? Or they have been.
That's my understanding, yes, and Ms. Arona is here, she's the representative.
And that's the intent, yeah, so, and that was my note that I was going to have you do is read, if you have the code, which of course you have the code, the purpose of the ADU, I think it describes that, what the intent of the ADU is.
Let me, let me read that for you. "The purpose of accessory dwelling units is to provide for the creation of an additional living quarters on lots within a single-family oriented neighborhood to help residents provide care and support for family members, provide security and companionship for property owners, and address the rising costs of homeownership while ensuring that such arrangements are both compatible with the character of the neighborhood, whether existing or new, and will not infringe upon the quality of life expected in those neighborhoods."
Remember, don't you? You were there.
Comes back.
Yes. Thank you for bringing that back to us. So that, that's the intent, and that's why R2 wasn't, that's more dense development than R1.
Let me add one other thing if I might. It's not my understanding, and I certainly haven't processed these applications in a way where there wasn't, these ADUs or the main structure could conceivably be rented, but the owner needs to, in the R1 District, nevertheless, the owner needs to reside in one of those two. We processed one, I don't know if you'll remember this, on North Sixth last year, and the gentleman specifically built the ADU for him to live in and his family members to live in the main part of the house because he was elderly and he knew that he would need some help later on. And I, I do believe he was renting that to those, those family members, but nevertheless, he was living onsite, and so that, you know, it's.
Fine.
He did, he did.
Yeah, the other thing that I can't help, but I feel déjà vu. Does anybody else feel déjà vu here? Nobody? What's this, am I the only one? I'm feeling déjà vu with recommendations 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. It was not regarding an ADU, but we went through this and 60 days and all the, yeah, oh, now you're remembering. It's feeling déjà vu here. I just don't want to go through that again. But that being said, anybody else have comments, discussion with our planner?
The, yes, I have a, at least a point of discussion here. The recommendations as set forth here in number one, the first part of that says the applicant shall comply with all of the requirements of 1715, Chapter 1715, which includes the residency requirement. So rather than, and I'm not sure what, what we can do here, but rather than approve something that is, that is at odds with the regulations, I would suggest that we either add language saying we accept that, we, we make an accept, find an exception here for this ADU, or that, or that, you know, a strict interpretation says that, that it may not be able to go forward. But so, the, the issue is that the conditions of approval may include language. It says you have to comply with all the requirements, and obviously, there's one that cannot be complied with. And, and I'm not sure that that's necessarily a deal killer in my book, but I mean, it's, it's something that we need to consider and figure, figure out how to navigate here.
Hey, just a comment, is, and make it consistent, I mean, for everybody, not just one individual.
And when we did the ADU on North Sixth Street, we had this very discussion regarding renting, and.
And he was moving in, the owner of the house was going to move into the ADU.
But he did qualify, yes, yeah.
May I interject something else? I, on the face of these applications, someone, anyone who makes an application can certainly say that they're going to reside in the house. And that might be the case for the first six months or a year, and then something else happens and they get transferred, and both of those properties, the ADU and the principal resident, both become rentals. We have no control over that. Would be very difficult for us to enforce that. And I wonder sometimes if this particular rule, understanding where it came from, is, is it almost impossible to enforce in the long run? So, the intent was good, it, but I think it's, it's much more difficult. In a way, it might have been more, it might have been better had the city decided that R1 was not the place to have them, rather than to have them, to allow them in such a way that it was impossible to enforce what you were actually going after. Or remove that.
Yes, and the whole premise for this ADU began with a proposal over to the east of, it's an owner, to the east of the entrance of Dawson Ranch. She owns a big parcel over there, and her vision was nice homes like Dawson Ranch with carriage houses for in-laws. And that was not allowed. And so came to life the concept of ADU and why it's allowed in R1 because that whole subdivision would have been R1. I wish Commissioner Bates was here because he was on that group discussion. It was a big one. I'm, I understand where we are. It's tough to enforce, the idea is idealistic, truly. Commissioner Ladue, do you have any comments?
I mean, I guess it's, you know, we would essentially be allowing a duplex in R1, and that is, you know, that is not the purpose of the ADU. And that's, allowing ADUs in R1 is reasonable for the goals that were set forth, just because enforcement's difficult, and I don't think we should, we shouldn't hold R1 property owners, you know, it's not, not allowing ADUs because the city can't enforce something. It's, you know, fine, this, this doesn't meet the intent, it's a duplex in R1, doesn't
Other discussion for staff? Okay, would the applicant's representative like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Please, Flo.
Make a difference.
Hi, Flo, would you please state your name and your address?
Yes, Floraine Arona, 902 Madison.
Thank you.
And I just am here in, in place of Mr. Canny. When he bought the property, the loft was in place, and he did live in the property at one time, the house. When he started renting it, I didn't know there was anything wrong with it, so I rented And we would, of course, would like to be able to keep that renter in there. When I first, the first time I rented, I rented it to a young lady medical student, and she was only there a couple of months, and she moved on. And then I rented it last year to one of the Raph Guides, one of our local people, not an itinerant. And when he moved, it was vacant for a while, and the people that were in the house wanted to pay extra so they could not have anybody there, and used it as a sort of a man cave, and they sort of destroyed it. So whenever they moved out, we remodeled it, I mean, repaired it, restored it, really, we didn't do anything different. And I rented it to a young gal who's there as an AT&amp;T, no, she's an Apple person guru, and she works at home. We'd like to continue renting it to her, hate to put her out, knowing there are no other rentals out there, but we're at your mercy. Anybody have? Do you have any questions for me?
Anybody have questions for?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for, for coming. Thank you for, for coming here tonight. When did Mr. Canny first acquire the property?
Mr. Canny purchased the property in 2009. The loft was built in 98, I believe it was. And, when you were talking about an address, I just have this to say about that. There has been, when it was, he didn't have it, um, it had an address of 1336 Allison, and there was a mailbox still there when I took it over. And the number was on the side of the house. And I pulled the, um, data sheet from the last, uh, Mar- Marion Dorito had had it listed when Canny bought it. And in the body of this, it says it has an apartment with a sep- on a separate legal, and it has a separate address. So, he took that at face value. I don't know if he rented that at all while he was living in the house or not.
Okay, anybody else have questions?
If it, if it has its own, Flo, you're saying it has its own parcel number and legal description?
I have pulled the records from back when, and they do not match what the deed of trust to the, from the hills to Canny are, or what Marilyn, or Marion, Marion had on the data sheet. Yes, it did have a separate, and it says that, separate legal.
But, but you weren't able to substantiate it with county records? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, I've got the county records with me.
And it says one parcel or two?
It says a different legal address than what-
Address, not legal description.
Address.
No, both.
Okay, gotcha.
No, Flo said both.
I'm not aware that it's two separate parcels. I, that I would definitely have to look into. I'm not, I'm aware that it's a meets and bounds.
Description.
Yeah.
I didn't find a meets and bounds at the county, nor was, I thought there was one probably, because on Marion's, um, data sheet, she listed just a lengthy description. And I didn't have a copy of that.
Well, that, the answer to that changes this whole discussion. If it's a, you know, if it's a simple, if it could be its own parcel, then this doesn't apply.
And then, it's not an ADU. The only thing is that there's inspections and such that need to be required for occupancy.
I would suggest somebody figure out how that two parcel thing.
Well, but if it was just a description in, in a realtor's advertisement of a property as opposed to a documentation from, on a, on a warranty deed, there's, that's two different things. Okay, did you find something?
Well, I do show that it's lots one and two. Uh, why, I thought that was a meets and bounds, I'm not sure. But I would, I would have to look to see where the lot lines were. I'm not, I don't know where they are, so I couldn't tell you whether the garage in apartment is on one lot and the house is on another.
I think this is very critical information we need in order to make this, because I think Commissioner Maloney has a good point. If this is in fact two parcels, then this isn't an ADU. If it's located on each parcel.
Would the assessor records show that? The, I did, I did go online and look at the assessor records. I was aware that this was an issue with this particular piece of property, that it had been listed as two parcels. The assessor shows it as one parcel.
Yes. They do that for tax purposes, but that doesn't necessarily mean-
So, that's not definitive.
But, the other thing is that it could have, for another reason, it might have been put together. So, the only way that I can tell is to actually go into the county record and look. I mean-
So, just for, just as a comment, and I apologize for interrupting, just as a comment, so, for example, where I reside, I have three lots.
Right.
One parcel.
Right.
Those, I can't subdivide into those three, I'm one parcel.
That's right.
So, we, we need to make sure we're talking about the same thing. This could be one tax parcel with two lots.
I think it is.
At that point, it's an ADU.
And I think that's what's the case, from what I could look at.
Okay, so it's one tax parcel with a description that includes two lot, kinda like mine, like I have, okay.
Now, I don't know where that lot line is.
It, it's, it doesn't matter, it's one parcel.
Well, it's one tax parcel, and unless I know exactly where the lot line is-
But for them to become compliant, they would have to subdivide the lot.
Well, nevertheless.
Lot line adjustment.
Lot line adjustment.
Could be.
So, that's a simpler, that's a simpler fix to this, I would say. There's a lot line adjustment and creates two legal descriptions.
Then they need to do, uh, water and sewer tap and such like that.
You said there, it has its own water and sewer tap to it.
Yes, but there's, and there's one.
There's one water tap, one sewer tap at this point.
Oh, not separate to the ADU and the house? I thought you said it had a water and sewer to the ADU. Oh, okay, okay.
And that is a requirement for, for ADU, so it'd have one tap, only one.
Yeah. Now, if you wanted to recess for five minutes, I could resolve this.
And how do we do that? We don't have Gregory.
I have to-
You've got the gavel.
I have the gavel.
I can go upstairs and, and look at the county records and figure it out.
Do I move or do I just say? Okay, I would like to recommend that we take a five-minute recess. How's that?
Do it.
We're gonna go to commercial. Welcome back.
I have printed off, um, from the GIL system, um, a copy of the parcel and the lots.
Thank you.
And so, I'm gonna hand this out to you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in that paper. Thank you, ma'am.
So, um, let me explain this really quickly. North is at the top of the page. If you look at the property, the first red line that you see, which these, the red lines are lot lines, the white lines are parcel lines. So, um, the first line that runs through the main dwelling unit that's on the left side of the parcel, um, that continues on north and south, that is not a lot line. That's, that might even be a section or a quarter section line. It's not a lot line. The other two are lot lines. This is a parcel. This is not, this could not, cannot be considered separate parcels for this, um, ADU. Because it's, if you'll see the garage that's at the bottom of the parcel, is constructed over a lot line. So, this parcel is one.
It cannot subdivide and save the issue. But it was a good try.
It actually, I mean, the other, the parcel all the way over to the right next to where Dewey Road is, I don't know if that's a legal-sized parcel or not. It's not constructed on, I don't know if that could be separately conveyed. But, all of the rest of this is, it's one parcel.
All right.
And that should put that to rest.
Yep, it sure did, thank you. I'm glad we took a break.
I am too, thank you for that.
Yeah, I think it was Commissioner Maloney, thank you. Could you, while we're here, one last little detail is this dark rectangle on the very last page of our packet, what is that?
Oh, yes, um, sorry about that. Those were comments that were made, um, by the, the building official on a hot pink piece of paper, and that's how it, um, that's how it got, um, copied. So, let me just, if you'll go into your staff report. On page two, at the bottom, uh, referral comments, city building official. Basically, it says permit issued for addition in 1998, but no paperwork is available. So, we don't know, I, and why we have no paperwork on this, I couldn't say, but we don't know what improvements the permit referred to.
Thank you. Anybody else, commissioners, have questions for either the applicant's representative or the staff right now? Okay, I will now close the public hearing. And call for a motion. And, uh, this one is a two, two motion, motion.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to propose, or I'd like to move the Canyon City Planning Commission, following consideration of the above-captured special review use request, and after considering the testimony presented by the applicant, city staff and other interested parties find as follows, notice of this public meeting was properly given as required by law. And... I, I have, I don't even know how to answer this next part, because like we just discussed, the conditions contradict the code.
Well, the can, one of the conditions, you're gonna have to decide whether you want to approve something that doesn't meet the conditions or modify it somehow.
I, I think item one just talks about the application itself.
Okay.
Is the application, does it comply? Not necessarily the content of the application.
Okay, so number one, the application does comply with all requirements of Chapter 17.24 of the CCMC and any applicable written rules. Do I need to read the whole thing? Um, "In the following respects, the applicant has provided a complete and generally accurate, accurate application, including all required supplemental documentation, and has paid the application fee. The application is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance as declared in Section 17.04 of the CCMC in the following respects. The applicant has addressed the location, nature, request, and character of the surrounding property to assure that the proposed use will be compatible with the surrounding land uses and with the goal of promoting coordinated and sound development in the neighborhood. Special, the special review use is designed to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and the area of its location in the following respects. The use will not generate objectionable noise, odor, or other environmental influences, nor negatively impact the availability of parking for the surrounding area, and it will provide a use similar to other residential uses in the neighborhood." Have nothing additional.
Do I hear a second?
Aye, seconded that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammerick. Is there discussion?
If we're going to move to approve this first part, we have to discuss what Commissioner Hammerick stated as one of the conditions is in contradiction to the code as far as the, um, residing on the property for six months of the year, first and foremost, before anything else is determined.
Hammerick?
So, the, I think that's the next motion.
Okay.
If you, that's, that's a motion where we, um, can-
That's the conditions?
Impose conditions. And so, this part is fairly straightforward. This, this is the straightforward part, I think. And so, we've got, we've got a motion, and, and I'm fine with the motion.
You may wish, under number four, to say something about that condition, about, not the condition, the, the requirement of residency.
As written in the code.
Yeah. If, if you feel that that is something that you want to allow or make another condition about, that's, that's entirely up to you.
Or do we just acknowledge the, the situation, and the current situation of occupancy does not comply with that portion of the code? Maybe that's what the additional four is, that we put as a finding of fact, is that we understand that the current occupancy is not in compliance with the code. That's, that's, that's number four. Would somebody like to amend the motion?
Or can I just add number four to my motion? Or-
Yes, go ahead.
Um, additionally, the planning commission finds as follows, "The, the current occupancy situation does not comply with the requirements of Chapter 17 dot 15 accessory dwelling units of Canyon City zoning regulations pertaining to occupancy."
Perhaps owner occupancy? Perhaps owner occupancy rather than occupancy?
Pertaining to owner occupancy.
Noted.
So, we still have a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there any further discussion? Hey Denise, would you like to please call the roll?
Certainly. Excuse me. Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hammerick?
Aye.
Chairman Bell and Tony?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloody?
No.
Negative.
So now, to move on.
Does the motion carry or?
Three to one. We're a quorum, right?
Hmm, yes.
So, by majority vote, that's, that's a simple majority of us present.
That's a simple majority.
Of the quorum.
Right.
Correct, okay.
Okay, so now, let's move on to, do I hear another motion?
I would like to move that, before we make the second motion, that we deal with one of the conditions, and I would like to modify that condition, and so I think that that would be an appropriate way to perhaps move this forward. The condition reads right now, "The applicant should comply with the requirements of Chapter 17.5, 17.15 comma," and I would insert, "Except that the requirements of 17.5 point 15 point 030 F is, compliance is not required," which is occupancy. The owner of property within R1, R1 Zone District containing an ADU must reside in either the ADU or the principal dwelling unit on the lot for a minimum of six months each calendar year.
So, what I think the correct, uh, a way to go forward is to make your motion and state that when you read your motion.
Okay. All right. Chairman Bell and Tony?
Well, Commissioner Hammerick? Yes?
Therefore, um, based on these findings of fact, and after, after having considered the development features of the proposed use, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the Canyon City Council. Approval of the special review use request with the following modifications and/or conditions. One, the applicant should comply with all requirements of Chapter 17.15, except for the requirements of 17.15 point 030 F, accessory dwelling units of the Canyon City zoning regulations, as such regulations pertain to the ADU requested. An existing ADU located in an existing detached garage and shall obtain a certificate of compliance for the approved ADU pursuant to Chapter 17.15 point 030 J2, no later than 60 days after the approval of this application. That's one. Two, the applicant shall obtain all required building, electrical, and plumbing permits for any construction or alterations that may be necessary, and obtain a certificate of occupancy if required. Three, the applicant shall request an assignment of address, of address for the ADU from the city within 30 days of the approval of this request. Four, the applicant shall comply with any and all requirements of the Fremont Sanitation District and the Canyon City Area Fire District. Five, unless otherwise modified by this approval or other subsequent decision of the city council, as it may apply to this request, all material representations made by the applicant in its application submittal and/or in any public hearing shall be binding upon the applicant. The applicant's failure to perform in accordance with such material representation- The applicant's failure to perform in accordance with such material representations could result in the revocation of this approval. And six, the approval herein granted shall extend only to the ADU plan as it is presented in this application, an existing ADU in the loft area of the existing detached garage, and will terminate if the ADU has not received a certificate of compliance within 60 days of approval of this special review use request.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Maloney. Is there any discussion? My, my discussion is, is two. One, as Councilman Gill and I have discussed already, the intent of the ADU. And I believe this is a slippery slope.
In R1.
In R, in R1, in R1. And I think this is a slippery slope, so I am concerned about that. The other point that I'm concerned about is, I'm not kidding, deja vu guys. We've had six conditions like this very recently, and he wrote us a letter dated June 27th, June 20th, 2017. And this was not good for the community, wasn't good for the city. This was, this was difficult. We went through a lot. And I'm just feeling it, it's almost the same conditions. I mean, it's a different situation, get me that. But it's gotta meet all the requirements, and come up to code, and it has 60 days. And here we go again. So, that being said...
Just a comment. I'm not allowed to make a comment, I'm allowed to ask questions. So I guess I have to be quiet.
You can make a comment, Councilman Gill. What would you like to say?
Okay, I'm gonna form this as a question. In, in this, we have ordinances written in Canyon City. And they're fairly explicit, and they're written for a reason. In order... Don't you guys feel that if we make exceptions, that it compromises everything that the ordinance book says? Especially when it's something like this in an R1? There was given thought to it when it was written for a reason. The only thing that might be in order would be to relook at the ordinance and either change the ordinance or not. Because a, the law is a law, as it's written. I mean, just, that's, I don't know if that's a comment or a question, or if I'm out of line by saying this. And I'm looking at, you know, there's other situations within the city and such that exceptions could be made to do da-da-da-da-da. So it opens a very, very large can of worms as far as enforcing the ordinances as they're written. And not just on a one or two-level basis, it could be, God knows, 50 or 60.
But I meant by slippery slope. I am concerned.
You know, one thing that I've always felt is that if the ordinance is the ordinance, fine. If the ordinance is not right, then as a governing body, we have the opportunity and the option to modify the ordinance.
Which we have done, many times, to make things-
Well, like I said, I don't, I don't know if I'm out of line by saying this or not.
Thank you for those wise thoughts, Councilman.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me what your concerns are? As to what, do you believe that these conditions are onerous?
We had, I'm just gonna go right to it, then. When we did the Hale Pet Door, we sat right here, we had similar conditions. And then when all of the agents within, and within the city, started doing their reviews, and all the requirements started coming forth to Mr. Hale, that, that turned into a real dust storm because of, I don't know, he didn't, not understanding. It seems so simple right here, but all this does is allow everybody to inspect. What this allows is everybody to just go in and say, "Mr. Canny," is his name, "here's what you gotta do." But Mr. Canny, now this isn't just this, it's all of these agencies get to do this to your property. And, and I think, it's clear to me that this could be involved, but oftentimes, as in the case of Mr. Hale, he didn't realize how involved it was. So I'm concerned that potentially Mr. Canny doesn't understand how involved this review could be, and he has to have electrical, plumbing, all of these different inspections. It wasn't, there's no permit. So when our building official is, are they gonna get a black eye when they say this doesn't meet code? And I'm, I'm just saying, it's just dialogue.
Well, there are, there are very specific requirements for those existing ADUs that were never permitted. So for instance, we have, in, in this case, we understand that Mr. Canny never, that was supposed to have been his man cave. I mean, that was part of his, his, his principal structure, really. It was never meant to be a separate dwelling unit. He has converted it, it is, now is one. And so in order to provide for the health and safety of the person who's living there and the community, that dwelling unit has to be brought up to code.
Oh, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Maybe we, I mean, I think-
I, I, I agree with you. I'm just saying that this is a repeat of Hale Pet Door when the planning commission had a great meeting, dialogued with the applicant, had these very similar six conditions, and it blew up.
Mm-hmm, it did.
It completely blew up. So here we are again, and I'm, I am concerned Mr. Canny's not here, but I understand, water is water, keep people away from things like this. He being in Hawaii, right? Okay, quite a ways away. I'm, and so, go ahead, Ms. Councilman Gill, more wisdom?
Looking for wisdom, you're looking in the wrong place. One thing that I might note is that Mr. Hale did comply with everything that the city asked him to do in November. He complied with the list of stuff that Canyon City said he had to do in November, and he finally agreed to it in March, April, May, whatever. So the list of conditions was there, and he met each and every one of those conditions, including, you know, not doing the handicap thing and stuff, which was, that's within our ordinances, we're allowed to do that. But he complied with everything.
Yeah, he did, ultimately. I'm, I'm good on that. I'm good on that. It was just the, the storm. To get there was really rough.
Was a storm.
Was a storm. Okay, I guess, okay.
I do have, I have one more comment. The, you know, hearing, hearing what you said, Councilman Gill, I, I fully understand that, and I agree with that. The, we are, we are not the decision-makers here. We can only recommend to the city council for final action. And so, and so, that is why I crafted the, my, my exception to the conditions that we have printed here in front of us is to highlight this to the city council, that this is indeed an issue that does need to be resolved. My personal opinion is that, is that situations such as this are not incompatible with R1, and that if we have a rule that says these are incompatible situations, perhaps we need to look at that. This is really-
Look at the ordinance.
A quite, a quite a compatible use.
Right.
And I've seen many, many situations like this in the years that I've rented and owned homes, where, where different, you know, these, these exact type of situations existed. Housing, ADUs over in a garage, something like that.
Right.
And so, so that's why-
And maybe the ordinance could be amended to not to exceed one, or something in R1, or something, I don't know. Anyway, that's just a thought for the future.
Good, good point. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your discussion. Anybody else? Commissioner Maloney? You're good?
Just one thought on the occupancy, owner occupancy rule, which I don't agree with, 'cause like we just discussed, someone could say, "Yeah, I'm, I'm living here, Dad's living up there. Oh, I'm getting transferred. So now my entire property turns into a rental, which then would be out of compliance." So I, I don't like that occupancy rule and that ordinance. That's just my thoughts. Maybe we can revisit that another time.
Put that on the list, okay. And Commissioner Ladoo? You've already, more? Okay, so, discussion is done. Do you feel that call and roll? Do ya?
Commissioner Hamrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Chairman Bell and Tony?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladoo?
No.
Thank you. And this is a recommendation. Remember, that's a recommendation. We are not smart enough to be decision-makers, except for that guy at the end.
You are absolutely incorrect, ma'am.
Okay. So, moving right along, we are going to open another public hearing. For... Oh, Denise, it says zone, okay, not to worry. Zone code amendment in Title 17 regarding Chapter 17.3, signs to revise the city's sign code. Am I in the right place? Am I, did I skip, did I skip an item?
Item number five is right here.
I did, I did. Excuse me, I turned too many pages. Can I reverse? Can I erase that? Okay. So, we're gonna open the public hearing this time on a zone code amendment, Title 17, for various amendments related to junkyard definitions, shipping containers, screening of commercial and industrial activities, and maintenance of display lots. And, I bet you don't know what I'm gonna say next, the provisions of the Canyon City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision development regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of this hearing as if set forth verbatim. Okay, thank you. Ms. Bernath, would you please begin with your, oh, notice?
Yes, I would, I would be happy to. Public notice was published at least 15 days prior to this public hearing, as required. I'll go on with the staff report?
Yes, please.
The city council has made aesthetic improvements in the community a priority based on the results of the community survey that was done in 2016. And as I understand, we're gonna get ready to do another one very shortly. As we've been reviewing the code provisions, and also doing code enforcement somewhat heightened, we found that some revisions are necessary in order to support and reinforce these heightened aesthetic values. Most of these issues were discussed with all of you on March 21st in a work session, but I'm gonna review them again, and we will, you guys will discuss and decide how you would like to proceed with each of these. First of all, the definition of a junkyard in Chapter 17.08 appears to allow a junkyard in an industrial zone, and yet junkyards are not allowed at all. We want to remove this discrepancy completely from the code. And this only takes the revision of taking three words out of the definition, as you can see. I have provided red lines in the staff report for you. So it basically says, "other than industrial." So we're taking junkyard out, so it's not allowed anywhere. The nearest thing that we have to something like that is a salvage yard. It's allowed by special review use in the industrial zone. That has been, that has caused a little bit of consternation in our code enforcement as they go through and review the code, and then go out and actually enforce. So we are suggesting that change. The second item is intermodal shipping containers. These are basically railroad cars and that kind of thing that people are using as storage. We are suggesting that they not be allowed in residential districts. They're used in place of building garages and sheds. And they're placed without any kind of oversight. We've provided photographs, also some photo exhibits in the staff report, and you can see that they tend to be on residential properties, anyway. They're somewhat unsightly. Now, what we have suggested is defining them and then not allowing them as an accessory structure or use. However, if you would like to soften that somewhat, and allow them, but have them be with strict placement areas, and/or be painted or whatever in a complementary color to a house or something, that might be something that you might wanna consider, but still allow them, because some jurisdictions actually do allow them as accessory structures. I, I assume that they're much cheaper, for instance, to put up than a garage. So, that's why many people allow them. Other jurisdictions I found allow them only in agricultural areas or in commercial areas. So that is our second suggestion. Third is screening regulations. We have very lax screening regulations, and we're suggesting that commercial and industrial exterior activities be screened when they're adjacent to existing or proposed residential property, but also when they're visible from adjacent rights-of-way or where outdoor commercial and/or industrial activities are located adjacent to open space or the Arkansas River corridor. So, screening may include plant materials, earth berm, solid fencing, or combinations thereof to achieve the desired result. And finally, display lots. We had a code enforcement officer do, visit with someone and tell them that they had a junkyard, and that that wasn't allowed, and they said, "No, this is a display lot." So we need to be able to distinguish between the two. And the only thing that we're suggesting to add is that display lots are maintained free of weeds, debris, junk, and trash. As I said, we noticed this, and there were no responses to the notice. If your, if you suggest that these go forward, they will go forward not in, in July to the council. As I said, we, I have your findings of fact, and we also gave you some photographs. These are absolute best photographs. Sometimes the copying is not really good from the original. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have questions for Ms. Bernath?
I do.
You do, Commissioner Hamrick? What a surprise.
Terry, thank you for the, for the staff memo here. The, in, on the issue of junkyards and salvage yards, the, the... In staff's opinion, the issue is that junkyards could be permitted in industrial areas? Is that, is that the issue that you're, that the inspectors are running up against?
Yes.
Or is it a dissonance?
We have some, well, it's kind of both. Unfortunately, I think what we have had in the past, based on that, those three words, there are certain folks in industrial areas who have junkyards. They are not operating a salvage yard, they're just storing junk, for whatever reason, and they're in an industrial district. And we ask them for their business license. Is this a salvage yard? No, it's not. Well, you can't, you, I, why do we, we don't even define a junkyard as being an allowed use in the industrial district. We only allow salvage yards. So if you're not, we have to make that distinction, and we have to get things really tightened up. Because what we're having is people taking industrial property and just junk on it, and leaving it there. A lot of these properties also, although this may very well be changing in the not-too-distant future, a lot of those properties are along the Arkansas River. And they're, we're now having to, we're having to deal with them. So we have to, we have to be able to identify them, make sure we have the proper definitions, and that there's no discrepancy. Did I answer your question?
So, but, so if a, if a particular commercial business had bottles, tires, trash, machinery, and the inspector comes by, if the operator says, "Well, but this is not a junkyard, this is a salvage yard," then the issue is the inspector feels- is a salvage yard," then the issue is the inspector feels that they're hamstrung some way by...
No. We would say, "If you have a salvage yard, where's your special review use for it?"
Correct.
And we would say, "If that's how you want to operate, then you have to come to council and get approval to have a salvage yard here." We don't allow those types of places unless they have specific approval in the city from council.
And, and I don't see what the, what the, what the inspection issue there is, because if that's the case, if, if you, as a commercial entity operates a business, they either have to declare, "This is a salvage yard," and then go through the process to receive approval to do that, or the, or it's prohibited as a junkyard. That's really the, the issue, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
It is.
And the issue is, is that salvage yards are not allowed in non-commercial settings?
Industrial.
Non-industrial?
Non-industrial settings.
Non-industrial.
And, and they have to have special approval.
And they're special use.
They aren't like a use-by-right.
Correct.
You have to come and get special approval.
So, to me, this, this says junkyard means an area of land within each district other than industrial. And, and to me, that, that, that's an appropriate clause, because for industrial operations, you almost always, the heavy industry almost always has a salvage yard.
Boneyard.
The difference between my, one man's junk and one man's treasure is perception, really, is what it, what it comes down to. And so, it's, the, the issue is, is that if you have an, a, a heavy industry, you almost always have to have some type of treasure yard or gold, gold area or whatever. You know, there's lots of euphemisms for it. But it, but it's really, the, the problem is that the items listed for junk are almost the same as items listed for salvage yard. And so, having a rule that distinguishes between them is going to be, is really hard. I don't think that that, it can be, it can be written. The, the proof of the intent of the owner or operator of that industry is whether they've been through the SRU process for, to, to turn whatever they've got stored out there into a salvage yard versus a junkyard. You can't look at a used tire and say, "Oh, that's junk," or all that, or, or, or that's salvage, as a, on an objective basis. It's only based on intent. So, it seems to me that these words are appropriate and necessary in the, in this regulation, that junkyard means an area within any zone district other than an industrial. And what that means for the inspector, if they go to an industry and say, "You've got a junkyard," it's up to the owner to say, "Oh, no, I, I haven't," or, "Oh gee, well, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to get an SRU," whatever. But, but that's, that's where the definition of salvage yard comes in then.
Because what you're saying is that you can only have a salvage yard in an industrial zone district. Otherwise, and with an SRU. Otherwise, it's a junkyard, and those are not allowed.
In any district.
It's also whether there is a business license or not.
Right.
Exactly.
That's correct.
Which would be part of the SRU process as well.
That's correct.
Yep.
But this implies, by leaving these words in there, it implies that a junkyard could be allowed in an industrial district.
And once again, I would repeat that that's only a difference of perception, not of actuality. You cannot look at a used tire and say, "That's a junkyard tire," versus a used tire that say, "That's a salvage yard tire."
And that's why we've defined salvage yard.
Okay. With this discussion, we'll just move on to the next. Thank you. Point taken. We're going to move on.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, that was fun. Do we have anything to discuss regarding intermodal shipping containers? And what you're suggesting, I have a question. Ms. Bernath, this is for all zones. We're not going to allow them?
No, residential only.
Not going to allow them in residential?
Yes. That's to begin with. I, I, we're not going to...
Are all residentials? So, we can have them in? Let's go the other way. Industrial? Central business? General, central business? Central business? Intermodal containers?
That's up to you. Would you, if you would like to recommend that they be not...
That's Main Street, guys?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's historic downtown. You don't care? Okay, then. All right.
No, I'm not saying I don't care. I'm saying that they should not be allowed in central business, business districts.
Oh, you're saying that it shouldn't? Okay. So, residential, we're saying we're not going to have intermodal shipping containers in all residentials, 1, 2, 3. Central business, that's downtown. Okay. General commercial. Think about general commercial. It starts at Ninth Street. It has east. It is East Main. It is all the way out to Walmart, pretty much, those areas.
River corridor.
Uh...
Potentially.
Uh, yeah. He's right. General commercial. That's general commercial.
Down Ninth Street.
Down Ninth Street? Mm-hmm. General commercial. Just thinking about it, there's some stuff on North Ninth Street. Mm-hmm. Okay. So, we can have them in general commercial. We can have them in industrial.
Yes.
But no place else.
Well, and that's, you'll have to decide whether you want to include central businesses.
You know, it might be easier on this to state where they are permissible rather than where they are not.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure we, we view it from both sides. It's, yeah, I agree. I agree. Just think, think about it. Because right now, you're just saying residential.
Yes.
Anybody have a thought? Do you?
And a question.
Commissioner Hamrick?
Is this, are, are we... This is a public hearing. We're acting on proposed language. And if we approve the proposed language, it goes to the City Council for final decision.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
So...
So, so I, I think it is, it might be appropriate to say, to list uses where it is permitted and where it is not permitted.
To be clear?
To be clear and, and comprehensive.
So, it says this. It says in the first sentence? No.
If you look into, on page two of that staff report, go down to the last paragraph where it starts with the red letters, which is the red line. It could say, if I'm hearing you correctly, "Intermodal shipping containers are not allowed as an accessory use or structure in any residential district, comma, where a lawful residential use occurs in any commercial or industrial zone district, or in the central business district."
You said they're not allowed in commercial and industrial zone.
Where lawful residential use occurs.
Residential. In commercial or industrial.
Ooh.
And we do have those, so...
We...
In fact, the photograph that was provided to you is one of those. It's a residential in a commercial district.
Which is what the second sentence is that you have in the red.
Mm-hmm.
It, okay, just to be clear then, it says, "Mobile units in residential districts on residential properties and non-residential properties in commercial and industrial zone districts," because non-residentials, those commercial properties used for commercial industrial, used for industrial, can have intermodal storage units.
I'm sorry, that went by me a little bit quickly.
By quickly?
Okay.
So, is there...
I'm working on it. Okay. So, the mobile, the units, the units, may be utilized in residential districts... How do you, I'm, I'm just so confused. May be utilized in residential districts. You just said they're not supposed to be in residential districts.
But these are different ones. Okay. Intermodal shipping containers are large Conex-type structures. They can be, I don't know, 65, 90, I don't know.
Oh, so, we're not talking about these.
Okay, so, the other, the mobile or modular storage units are different. Those are the for-rent pod-style that are shorter, more squat, and they're only meant to be on, they're used very temporarily, but they unfortunately end up in people's front yards for long periods of time. And so, we were going to try to regulate those as well.
60-day requirement.
Yes, with a 60-day requirement. We're not going to have anybody right now do any kind of an application or anything, but try to get this in and start to look at it and, and encourage people not to be having them there for, in, in their front yards for a year.
So, how are we going to implement this regulation? Is there going to be a grace period? Is there going to be a notice? Is enforcement going to go out and put tags on these units because that very last sentence about mobile homes, it should not be used as accessory drilling units?
Now, that's a reiteration. This is already in the code, and I'm, we're simply repeating it here.
So, are you going to give 60 days, 90 days to come into compliance? Are you, how, are you just going to ignore until somebody complains? What are we going to do?
It would be my suggestion that we have a, a date by which compliance has to be met. When we will put this in to the code, all of these will have probably a grace period that's written in. Like, none of these will take effect until 90 days or 90 days after the approval. That way, it gets people, they're aware of it. They can, they can change or move whatever they need to. However, those, those intermodal shipping containers that are already there, I, it would be my suggestion that those become non-conforming. I, I don't think that, I think we should go forward with anything new, as opposed to having somebody, we go down to South Ninth and say, "You have to take yours away."
All right.
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gill?
Just as a question, how many potential of, of these units are out there? Do we have an idea in residential areas?
I don't exactly. I don't know.
10? More than 10, less than 10?
Oh, I would say probably more than 20. Maybe, maybe even more than that.
Now, I don't pay attention to these units because I don't even know what they are. So, I apologize for my lack of understanding.
They make tiny houses out of them, too, on television.
I missed that one, too. Okay. So, intermobile shipping, can, thank you, I'll look for that. Intermobile shipping containers, that first one said, "Any residential district," and you said, comma, "Central business district"?
Yes, I was going to add the central business district. If I heard correctly, that you wanted to not allow them in the central business district or on any residential property.
Well, there's residential property in central business district, so wouldn't that eliminate that?
Or any property in the central business district.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I just, I got, I just, I just am really settling into this. So, intermobiles, intermodals, not in any residential district and not the central business district. Mobile modulators may be in the residential districts and on residential properties in commercial and industrial zones. And that particular sentence doesn't mention central business districts, so we're good. And then, the last line applies to all zones. Are we clear on that? Sorry. Okay. Yes, Commissioner?
The, the, I was, I did read, read this, and I was intending to soften it, as you suggested perhaps we did, by saying that if, that if intermodal containers were made similar in style, appearance, and color to a predominant structure on a piece of property, it could be allowed. But, but that's not the only issue, as I hear. The, the, the other issue is placement and foundation and requirements, of which there may not be any for these types of containers. And that is, that's a concern. And so, I'm willing to go with this language, even though my preference would be to allow people to convert intermodal containers to something more eye-pleasing. I mean, that's what we're talking about here, is, is something that, that, that is, fits in with the surrounding area rather than sticks out like an intermodal container. Cotter had its records in an intermodal container, by the way. But, uh, the, so, so I'm, I think I'm good with this language.
All right. So, now we're moving on to screening regulations. And this is in public corridors, adjacent to residential properties. I know the Arkansas River is under review for enhancement, if you will. My question on this one is, um, again, beginning enforcement. Are we going to do the grace period again? Are there going to be notices, complaint? Is it as the river is improved, then we do it? What are we going to do here?
Again, we would have that, it wouldn't be...
Grace period?
Yeah.
So, people would be notified?
They would be notified if they were in violation or if there was a complaint. We would not, I mean, we're not going to go out and, I, I think what... The way code enforcement works is that we have limited resources, and we are trying to improve the aesthetics of the corridor. However, once this goes into effect, hopefully, we will publish, it will be published, we will probably end up doing some sort of outreach and talk to people about their, their outdoor storage and screening, as it may be visible from our most, um, most important corridors. And I'm talking about Highway 50, the Arkansas River, and Ninth Street generally, if that's the case. And when we do this, we aren't going to home in on everyone who has outdoor storage. I would imagine that we'll be looking at those where, what I, what we're very concerned about is that people, the front of their building looks really fine, and in the back of their building, which fronts or backs onto Highway 50, that's where they store all their junk. And so, we either, they either need to screen it...
Salvage.
Sal, well, no. It's just the stuff they forgot to throw away. And they, I don't think that they actually, a lot of these businesses, I don't think that they realize the face they're showing to the community or our visitors or people who are traveling. So, what I'm suggesting is that we take a very soft approach and that if we have complaints, we'll deal with them. If we find someone who ha, happens to be a gross violation, we'll deal with it. And other than that, we'll try to educate and see if folks can't improve on their screening. That's how we will do, that's how we will deal with it. We are not going to go out and buy, give notices of violation to everybody who has a screening issue at present.
At present.
Well, you know, we...
Thanks for that clarification. Any comments? Any on, on this one? Just on screening?
I suggest that City Council adopt, I always said this about signs, is that some sort of incentive for people to clean up properties, that with some assistance, help, incentive, something.
Great idea.
As a first step, and then a second step to comply with the, whatever we change.
Yeah, we have organizations that want to go out and help and have community projects. And I know that this is, seems ridiculous. You think, "Oh, they're a business, they don't need our help." We assume that anybody who owns a business has just got money kicking out of the bed. And lots of times, no. They, they burn the midnight oil and they're, they're, they're having their issues, too. So, if we all want to go out and pitch in like we do on a state highway and pick up trash, I'm with you, Commissioner Maloney. That's a great idea. Yeah. Okay. Anything else on screening?
Yes.
Oh, we have a, you have...
Couple of questions.
You do. You have another question, Commissioner Hamrick?
I do.
Okay.
The, so this says, as it reads now, "All commercial or industrial exterior activity areas, including but not limited to service areas and outdoor storage yards that are adjacent to existing or proposed residential property, visible from adjacent road rights-of-way or where outdoor commercial and this, or industrial activities are located adjacent to designated open space on the Arkansas River." open space on the Arkansas River." The, my question is, um, adjacent, from adjacent, visible from adjacent road rights-of-way. Are there, do we have any businesses that aren't, don't have? The, the, the issue to me there is that that seems pretty broad. And that, that my, the question that I have is, if this were in effect now, what would that do to the kiln? What would that do to the railroad? Because they have properties that are outdoor storage that are visible from adjacent right-of-ways and are yet in, you know, industrial districts, as I, as I understand it.
Who are you thinking of?
The railroad and the kiln.
The kiln.
Right there behind Taco Bell.
Oh, the refractory.
Refractory. What will it do to those businesses if, if we have this? You know, I think it's important that we deal with the designated open space areas. I think that's important. That should be in here. But my concern is visible from adjacent road rights-of-way. Seems kind of broad. Seems to me that that'll sweep up just about every business and that they're, which is maybe the intent. I mean, maybe that's the intent.
It is broad. I, I do understand what you're saying. I mean, we can certainly strike that and go with something less onerous.
We're going to finish this discussion amongst us first, please.
I'm a staff member and I have some comments as a staff member.
I understand that, but we're going to get through this and then we're going to go to that. Okay, we're going to finish this.
Sure, I can wait.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, keep going with your adjacent.
So, so, so that was it? But that, and Terry kind of addressed that concern, that maybe that, that, that language could be struck or could be considered to be struck because, because I'm, I'm not sure where, you know, what, if, if we intended to cover everybody, we don't even need to put this in. We just say, everybody, this is you. You know?
I do understand what you're saying and I, I do, I mean, it's, it has occurred to me that that's problematic. And as a first go-round, I have no problems with striking that. I know that it's going to be difficult for some people to screen their activities from where they're located, rights of, I mean, from rights-of-way. I, I do, I understand that, so.
And, and I understand what you're saying too, Commissioner Hammerick, because visible from adjacent right-of-ways means that if I'm standing two blocks away and can still see it, I mean, yeah, I can see the mountain. Yeah, so it, somehow, do you have a feel for that, Councilman Gill, as you're the guy who's going to have to carry this forward for us?
I'm waiting till the end of the discussion here.
You're not going to carry it forward? You're going to say, "Too bad, huh?"
I am not going to say that.
Okay, okay. So our last little piece is going to be display lots and then we'll open it up for the rest. Okay, we're going to just finish our display lots. Anything on display lots?
Okay.
And, and we're going to, display lots?
Madam Chair. She is Terry's boss and she may have a suggestion to this.
Oh, I under, I understand. It's just that, I just wanted to get all the way through this language.
Well, she may have a solution to this. She has massive experience in this such. Maybe she has a solution or a recommendation that might aid us.
Yeah, I simply was going to, Dina Zvetlik, Community Development Director, I was simply going to comment on any of these changes in regulations. They're often applied when new applications come in or a change of use comes in and/or you could establish a, say, fifty percent, you know, addition or change in a building and that would trigger then complying with some of these new regulations. So that's something to consider and keep in mind as you're considering any of these changes, any ordinance change, whatever it may be. There will be a period of time where there is transition and that can be established to be either with, say, a new application, a change of use, or some sort of percentage addition or trigger on that parcel and you can do it that way. Or you can choose to be more direct and give a timeline for compliance.
Thank you. All these, some of these are existing rights of, rights of, allowed uses which do not have applications. If they're in industrial, commercial, they're businesses and they're screened, they're sitting there. So I think we're back to the beginning on visible from adjacent. Okay, display lots. Commissioner Hammerick?
I think this is a great workaround to the, to the issue of, you know, maintaining good visual within our city. I think it's a great workaround and, and it looks good to me.
Any else? Okay, so really, the only ones we talked about, just as, as we have found out, we've agreed with, is the understand salvage, we understand the zones of the intermodal shipping containers, got that all worked out, the differences in where they are and aren't. We have not quite figured out this visible from adjacent roadway thing.
Well, like we were just talking, it would only apply to change of use or change of ownership, et cetera.
I don't think that's the intent of this. The intent, according to Ms. Bernath, when she started, was to clean up our corridors so I can still have a business there and be asked to put up a visual screening if I'm adjacent to the Arkansas River. That was a suggestion by staff, but that's not, the intent is to clean up the Arkansas River, am I right? Or the corridors, the main.
The Highway 50 corridor and the river.
And, and the Ninth Street, so.
Stuff that's visible to the.
Then it's, then those properties are pretty solid ownerships. I, I think that if you wait for that, you're not going to get it done. But anyway. Okay, this is a public hearing. So at this time, are we ready? So we've worked it through, battled it out. Anything? Commissioner Ladue, any questions? No? You're good for now. Okay, go ahead.
Can I make a, I, I don't know if this would work or not, but if, we might want to identify what the corridors are rather than just say visible from adjacent road rights-of-way and, and say visible from the US-50 Highway Corridor, the Highway 115 Corridor, leave it at that.
And the river.
And the river.
And the river cor, and the river corridors already been identified here.
That's a thought. That's a good idea.
And that, I think, is a major objective of everybody here, is to clean up the aesthetics of people, of the roads that are highly traveled.
Yeah, okay, I will, I will modify that.
And you know what? And that kind of aligns with, and I don't know how many years ago it was, when Fremont County did a visual corridor to try to identify, that's exactly what they did. Visible to those of us who go in the backyards or those who, visitors who come into our community. And they did do the visitors coming into our community, which is the, frankly, it's the same roads. Okay, we're consistent with the county, which is good. Now you have a partner. Okay. Seriously. Okay, so we're going to eliminate the visible from adjacent and you're going to put, you're going to put in the actual corridors.
Right, I'm going to put in the corridors. And then we will leave in then adjacent to designated open space or the Arkansas River Corridor.
I know, it's a great idea.
Okay.
Okay, all right, now.
That makes sense.
It does make sense. All right, moving right along then. Do we have anybody who would like to address the commission? Please come forward, state your name and address. Hi, Jackie.
Hello. My name's Jackie Johnson. I own a business at 428 South Ninth Street, Walt's Appliance. I'm a little confused. And I think I was the one that got the notice for a salvage yard and you might have some pictures of me there with your pictures. Because since 1988, since we've had the business there, we've got the store on one side and a big vacant lot on the other side. In that vacant lot goes all the larger items that are up for sale that won't fit into the little store. Ladders, wheelbarrows, grills. Sometimes, well, in the last couple of months, I sold my husband's pickup out of there. A few weeks ago, I sold one of his cars out of there. I've got some telephone poles out there for sale. So I'm confused about the screening for exterior activities.
But wouldn't that be considered a display lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jackie, you'd be a display lot.
When I got the notice, I was, they wanted me to get a, do a special review for salvage. And I didn't, so then I did put up a sign, "Everything out here is for sale, whether it's a lawnmower for this, for that." I'm just a little concerned about the new wording in this. Are they going to be back again? And behind my shop does kind of look like a salvage yard. But there is no roadway behind me. The people behind me own the property all the way to the houses. They have an alleyway there that they do park for the duplexes on Tenth Street. And it wouldn't be that hard for me to cover that little bit of a section. But to have to web my whole section that faces Ninth Street makes it hard for it to be for sale.
Well, that's true. And that's why we've actually made that distinction, because our code enforcement officer actually went out and, and misidentified this. And so it, since it is, and you identified that it was a display lot, we just want to make sure that they're maintained in such a way that we see them as display lots and not as junkyards, okay?
Good with that.
Okay.
So Jackie, this is the Jackie rule right here. They wrote this for you.
I'm glad.
Yeah.
It looks a lot better when I had, than when there was an environmental study down on it.
You know what? I will give you that. That was many, that was twelve years ago.
That was when Walt was in control when he has retired.
Yeah, twelve years ago. It does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all? So you're, so you're good?
Those were my concerns when I saw the screening and I saw the salvage yard again. I wanted to make sure that I was good with my display lot as long as I'm running the weed eater and all that good stuff.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, we, we appreciate you attending. That's a good thing. So this is, this is this rule, this amendment in action right now. That's what it's supposed to do.
Yep.
And it's supposed to help enforcement be more clear in their determinations of what's, okay, we're good. All right. So, anybody else want to speak? Well, then we will close the public hearing. All right, I will call for a motion. This is a two-motioner. Finding a fact first?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the Canyon City Planning Commission upon conducting a public hearing on the above-captured zoning ordinance amendment and after considering the testimony presented by city staff and other interested parties finds as follows, notice of public hearing was properly given as required by law. The proposed amendments are necessary and appropriate.
Second. Thank you. Please call roll. Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hammerick?
Aye.
Chairman Bellantoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Is there a second motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to move, based upon the above findings of fact, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendations to the council of the City of Canyon City.
We need to list our, do we need to list our modifications, Terry?
If you'll just give me general direction about any amendments you wish to make, I will make them and pass them on to council.
Okay, I'll need a little assistance. Approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance, but with the following modifications as attached. First one was adding central business district to the.
Inter, yeah, the intermodal.
Intermodal. Locations.
And then the next one is the screening, striking, yeah.
Also, striking visible from adjacent road rights-of-way and adding in the actual corridor descriptions?
Yes.
Is that it? I think that's it.
And that's all.
I think that's it. Go ahead, here a second.
Second.
Oh, discussion, wait, hold your pen.
I'm good with that, with that motion and second, but I would ask Councilman to please convey my concerns about striking other than industrial from the junkyard definition to the city council. Sometimes I'm not sure they, they read all of our discussion here, but if you could, if you could relay that, that's, that's the only thing I would request.
Fighting.
Other than industrial?
My issue is striking that because I feel it's necessary. It should remain.
Are we good with discussion? Good? All right, please call roll. Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Hammerick?
Aye.
Chairman Bellantoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. The motion has passed. Lastly, last is the opening of the public hearing for the zone code amendment revisions to Chapter 17.3 Sign Code pursuant to compliance with Reed versus Gilbert. So, the provisions of the Canyon City Municipal Code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision and development regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of this hearing as if set forth verbatim. Ms. Bernath, would you please, public notice, proof of notice?
Yes, public notice was published at least fifteen days prior to this hearing as required.
Okay, and now would you please give us a report?
I will. I need to preface this by telling you, first of all, that ninety or more percent of these revisions were done by the attorneys. And my, my understanding of Reed versus Gilbert is very basic. And so what I'm going to suggest is that I'll go through the staff report. If you have questions or suggestions that you would like to take forward, I will do that for you in very great detail and take them to the council. But it may very well be that I am not able to answer some of the, the questions that you may have, if they're at all in the kind of detail that you guys delve into. Basically, Reed versus Gilbert had to do with a sign that was placed, it was a directional sign. And my understanding is that it went to court, finally went to the Supreme Court, because this directional sign was not allowed in where it was placed at, for the particular time that it was allowed by the city. And what happened was that it was compared to political signs and other types of signs that were allowed. And because this directional sign to a church was not allowed, they took issue with that and went to the courts. And it was decided that if anything is based on content, if you have to read what's on the sign, you can't regulate it. It can only be regulated by time, place and manner. So we have to, especially when we're talking about directional types of signs, political signs, those kinds of things that we have in our code now that are regulated specifically for that purpose have to be changed.
Bless you.
So, that's what has happened here. I'll go through a couple of changes. So, for instance, one of the signs that has come, that has been eliminated, for instance, if you go to page three of the markup, they, for instance, have taken off-site sign out as a definition. You would have. they, for instance, have taken off-site sign out as a definition. You would have to read that sign to know that it's off-site. Otherwise, you wouldn't know that it's off-site. So we're going to be, until such time as we do a very major revision to our sign code, we will be regulating signs by time, how long they can be up, place, where they can be put, and the manner in which that they can be put up. So that would be size, that kinda thing.
Design or size?
Yeah, size, primarily. So that's what these particular revisions are for. So for instance, if you go to page five, item number C8, in our code right now, it says a description of the use or uses occupying the site and the message proposed. Well, the message proposed has to be stricken. So the attorneys have gone through and basically made those changes.
So, we have off-street signs now that are called freestanding signs, and they are regulated as freestanding signs?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the end?
So, um, yeah, that's basically it. I, I don't wanna get into too much detail. Rather than sign classifications, they have changed it to be signs in non-residential districts versus signs in residential districts. There is more oversight in commercial speech. That particular memo that I just gave to you talks about that. And I'm sorry that I'm just not as well-versed in this as I ought to be, but I, I find it very, I actually still find this confusing. So, at some point.
You'll become a master, or you will retire, one of the two.
Yeah, one of the two.
Yeah.
Anyway, if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to either try to answer them or make sure that we, I, I get your questions to the council in detail.
You got your pen ready, Councilman Gill? Do we have any discussion on this? Signs. I, I, I went over this really letter by letter, word by word. I'm sure Commissioner Hammack did as well, didn't you? Anything? No comment?
I do, I do have a question.
I'm ready.
Yes?
What is that called?
If it meets the, if it meets the size requirement, and you can, I believe that there's a requirement for how many days it can be up, and it meets the size requirement. What's on it doesn't matter.
And does it require a permit?
Well, it doesn't require a permit beyond, if, if it's only one sign, I mean, let's look.
That's, that's the political, that's the, that's the election exception. Correct. I think there's an election exception in here. I don't think there's.
So, it says that you can have one freestanding sign permitted to be placed without a sign permit in the front yard of a lot or a corner lot. Such sign shall not exceed four square feet. Has to be placed five feet back from any lot line. So, yes, you can.
So does this mean that during election years, you can only have one political sign in your front yard?
Well, you are allowed to have political signs, and those are, those are regulated a little bit differently. And interestingly enough, second, it's, it's on page seven of the markup, item I. You can have one sign not to exceed three square feet permitted four months prior to an election, so long as the sign conforms with the other limitations of this chapter. Such additional sign must be removed 10 days after the conclusion of the election.
Where, where are you?
On page seven of the markup.
Oh, on the top?
Mm-hmm.
Aye, yeah.
Item.
Again, it says one sign.
Aye, mm-hmm, one sign.
So you can only support one candidate at a time. I hope there's only one vacancy on city council at a time.
Here's the thing, that, that's for when a permit is not required. If you wish to have additional signs,
I think that needs to go to council.
I believe that you may, that you have to go to, you have to get a permit.
Legal council, not us, 'cause they, they're the ones that did the provision on this.
I'm sorry, I'm just not well-versed in this. I can, I can look for it. I do believe that you would have to get, you would have to get a permit for it.
What, say that again?
You'd have to get a permit for it if you want an additional sign.
The candidate or the property owner?
The property owner.
The property owner has to get a permit for, I'm loving this.
So, in a, in a residential.
This is good, I'm good.
Hang on, in a residential district, you have one freestanding sign.
This is gonna clean up election year stuff real good. We have to really have to weigh our choices.
If you want, if you would like more than one sign, you have to get a permit.
And, and let me guess, it costs?
Probably not, not in.
So Terry, if I may. Again, Dina, Community Development Director. So again, I think regarding this specific line item, one amendment or clarification to that could be, and of course, we would go to the attorney on this, we could simply say one sign per issue or candidate. So that might be a clarification, and that's something that we could go back to the city attorney on.
I'm not asking for a change. I'm thinking this might be good. I wasn't asking for a change. We just need to prioritize.
I do have a comment.
Do you?
I do.
Hi Commissioner Hammack.
My, my comment is that, that one can go wrong by showing too much deference to attorneys. That's my comment.
I'm hearing you.
The reason that I said that is because of the signage rules and the, it, it's something that's very, very touchy.
Understand, understand.
Right.
And, and, and I appreciate that comment. I, I understand that. But I have dealt with attorneys all of my professional career.
Way too much, huh? Way too much.
And one can go wrong. But my comment would be that, that if we're talking about this particular one on page seven, the political signs, it shouldn't be limited in number. It should not be limited in number. You should be able to have as many political signs you want, as you want, as long as you meet the, the time requirements.
I think timing is very, very important. And it has not been in here too. Yes, yes. But I think the other important thing, keeping to what Commissioner Hammack just said, is Ms. Bernath, we want this written such that you're comfortable with it. When you're comfortable with it, then when I come in and need to have this talk, we can work with it. So please represent us.
I will.
Thank you.
So, one of the things that, number one, is political signs should not be limited in number.
Correct.
Okay, I will pass that on.
And politicals mean causes, which is what your point was to the taxes, our, our road improvement project and things. It's, you know, it's, it's community causes. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Alright, Commissioner Maloney?
Anything else?
Did you have your hand up?
Oh, no, I was just reading about two flags per parcel. I don't know if that's an issue anywhere in town, but there's no more than two flags per parcel, so I could just imagine someone putting up a dozen flags, just because, you know, it's just a thought. No, I don't have any further questions.
Flag signs. We were having this discussion.
However, when we're discussing flags, those flags are actual flags, as in United States or Colorado flags.
Oh.
That's what we're talking, or anything else that, but it, those are flags. Flagging is, or penance
Oh, that's different.
is a different situation. Those would be, and, and this is something that we're going to correct, but I, because I just found this as I was going through it yesterday with the attorney. Flagging with penance and that kind of thing would be, is allowed or should be allowed on commercial properties. That's a, that's a way of advertising. That is not necessarily appropriate on a residential parcel. So residential parcels would be allowed flags, like United States or Colorado flags.
But just two?
But just two, no more than two. I mean, do you think there should be unlimited flags on residential parcels?
Why regulate that?
Just picturing a certain type of person that would, you know. You know, like the guy that, they said they couldn't have more than two flags on his property, so he painted his roof on a giant flag. Remember, you know, you've seen those things, so. It just struck a funny chord in my mind, that's all. I'm sure it's fine.
Okay.
I, I think one of the things that I liked about this was the distinction between residential versus non-residential. I think that's important. But we've brought that up regarding salvage as well. It's important. It's different. Okay, so we've heard from Commissioner Maloney and Commissioner Hammack. Commissioner Ledoux, what do you think? You're always good. Do you have a comment on any of these signs? Nope, he has no comment. Well, but this is, I, I really wanna stress to Commissioner Hammack's about, this has gotta be manageable by us without law degrees. And understood, we don't wanna get to the point where we were so many years ago with people coming to the city, and nobody understood. So that's one of the things I feel like we've made a lot of progress on. We, we can, we are understandable. I mean, we, we can address it, and people can read it, and they know what it means.
There is going to be a little bit of a learning curve with this. I apologize for that. I mean, but I'm still at that, so we'll get through it. And then, of course, hopefully before the end of the year, I say that maybe in, within the next 12 months, we will be doing a major overhaul on the sign code. I mean, major. We, this, this is a very old code. We had to get this done because of the First Amendment issues. But other than that, we're, we'll be going through a major revision.
Okay. Anybody from the audience wish to talk about signs? No? No? Okay, then I will close the public hearing and call for a motion on findings of fact.
I will, I will make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammack.
The Canyon City Planning, I make the following motion. The Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting a public hearing on the above-caption zoning ordinance amendment, and after considering the testimony presented by city staff and other interested parties, finds as follows, notice of the public hearing was properly given as required by law.
I have a second. Thank you, Commissioner Ledoux.
Could you finish, I'm sorry, the, it, the second part?
Oh, the, the proposed amendments are necessary and appropriate.
Thank you.
I'll second.
You still second? Thank you, Commissioner Ledoux. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hammack?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Chairman Bellantoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
The motion passed unanimously. Do we have a motion for the recommendation to council? Thank you, Commissioner Hammack.
I make the following motion. Based on the above finding of fact, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendations to the city, to the council of the City of Canyon City. Approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance with the following modifications on page seven, I, to remove the number limitation. But everything else as discussed.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Ledoux, please, may we have?
Commissioner Hammack?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Chairman Bellantoni?
Aye.
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
And the motion is approved unanimously. Thank you so much. Onto the next item. Announcements. Well then, we have no announcements.
I did.
You, you have an announcement, don't you?
I have one.
You have one.
After you.
I don't have an announcement. Do I have an announcement?
I don't know. He, he said that you did, so I, I would defer to you, Madam Chair.
This is your last Planning Commission meeting?
Yeah, well, I have an announcement about a couple of things.
Okay.
Okay, so, first of all, I left on the dais for you a letter that was requested to be passed on to you from Mr. Hale of Hale Pet Doors. Those are for you. And also that memo for commercial speech. And I know you're gonna run right home and read it. So exciting. But I leave that for you, you can take it home. And secondly, I would like to say we're going to have three, I'm assuming three new members. I wasn't at the hearing last night, so.
That's what I remember.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gill. Three new planning commissioners who will be starting in July. We will have a meeting on July 18th. Rest up. It's going to be longer than this one. We have a lot of things on that agenda. And lastly, I would like to say thanks very much to Angela Bellantoni for all of the time and effort on the Planning Commission, since I have been here, I've been here almost four years, and I know that she was on for
Been here almost a decade.
For a lot longer than that, I, I realize. Your contributions have been invaluable, and I very much appreciate it. Angela and I butted heads on more than one occasion, but we, I learned a lot from this group, and from you in particular. So I just wanted to say thanks very much. Also, saying goodbye to Pat Frieda, who is not here. She did not decide to continue on, but always enjoyed working with Pat as well. So, I hope to see you in, out in the community, if not here every month, so.
Thank you, and I don't consider it, but it has as a constructive dialogue. That's what it was.
The what?
Constructive.
What?
Always constructive dialogue.
Oh my gosh, yeah.
So, thank you. That was very kind, very kind. With that, anything else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.